All right. I think we should get going then. Got all our members here. Ken Miller, who is sitting in, said he was not here for proof of the floor, so we can go ahead and get started on our meeting. And basically, I think, you know, the intent was to sort of go, you know, start working our way through the comments. At least, you know, we can debrief in the sense of overall sense of the comments. And I will then sort of, we can discuss a bit how you want to proceed. I don't know anything other than going through them one by one, but anyway, we'll get there. So at any rate, first, I guess, is there anything people want to say or in general as sort of their, I do briefly sense the impressions of both the public hearing and also the written comments we've received? I'm not seeing anything, so, all right. I mean, I, you know, quickly, I think there was a fairly good amount of support expressed for the plan, both in the written comments and in the public hearing. I have these lingering qualms because, to some extent, there are sectors of the town that haven't become engaged in the process, and I wish they were. I think that would make this whole thing better. But we've tried to avail them of the opportunity. And so I think there we are. And the question is now, oh, I guess first two which on the item on the agenda. So we have the written minutes from the public hearing that the town clerk wrote up. And I sent those out to you guys. And I just want to sort of approve or disapprove those minutes. So anybody have any additions, corrections, anything else to the minutes that Jesse gave us?
No, they look good to me.
Yeah, I mean, they were, they're, yeah, they're quite good. There were some very specific phrases that were, that were made by some of the people that weren't included there, but I think that they're covered in the written comments.
And they're also covered in the recording and any transcript that could be made if we had any questions that I think they appeared to capture the essence of what people said to me.
For example, I mean, Renata actually had, one of her comments had to do with defining what housing clusters was. And that seemed to have come up in the written comments as one of the concerns, you know, somebody had.
Right, okay. The only thing, I guess, I had a couple of small things. On Ellen's stuff, the wording got garbled somewhere, and I can just work it out with Jesse. I don't know, I have to look for it now, but there was a spot where it felt like there were some words missing or something in the notes. But I'm not seeing where it is right now. And yeah, I also picked up on a couple of things, like I know that Jonathan in his comm stack and his support of solar farms had mentioned, though, that he felt they could impact views and didn't want them to, and that sentiment isn't in the minutes. It could be there, we could just assume that since it's there in the video, it's okay. You know, that kind of stuff. So are we, do we want to go to that level of detail or just, as you guys say, leave it as is? We got the recording.
I think we should move on to the written comments.
Okay, sounds good to me.
There were just a lot of them. I mean, I guess my comment about the comments is that they're excellent, actually, many of them. And I don't know how we want to proceed with just strictly actually making the changes. I mean, I'm actually glad, Ken, I'm glad you're here because some of your comments in particular, I was like, yes, we need to actually change that. But I don't know if we're, I don't know, I've been on Zoom all day. I don't know how to do this in this medium, to be totally honest with you, like.
I don't have any great ideas. I was sort of thinking, yeah, we could basically would have to, well, I got myself on two computers right now so I could pull up comments on one and zoom on the other. And we could, well, I thought literally we could, you know, take point by point. Do we agree? Do we agree? Do we want to follow up on that? Some of these things, it's fine, okay, typo or at this point, we could just say, okay, we agree. But some things are a little more involved and would take some research. And I don't know, we need to say, okay, yes, we should do that, or no, that's not important enough. So I really don't know how to proceed. That's one option is to basically go through the written comments line by line and essentially also the written minute summary, line by line, to see if there's something people want us to do. But anyone has another idea like, oh, we should work on these somehow independently, divvy them up? I don't know. I did write a chart. As I read through them, I wrote a quick Excel chart of a few things. Again, there's not a lot of overlap. And for a lot of them, I just sort of, I put some notes in a Word file saying, read these through as a group, because someone will have a bunch of small points, which are all good, but I'm not going to summarize them. So, yeah, I mean, there's, any other thoughts on how to do this other than sort of go through the comments one by one?
I mean, I think that they do, you know, there, many of the comments can be organized into groups. So it's sort of like, when I think about it, going through, well, there's three different levels, I guess, I'm thinking at it. One is, you know, going through these things line by line and giving them sort of input from us singly or, you know, like, we could go back through the entire process of gathering feedback for the comprehensive plan, you know, and give that same amount of attention to everything that was suggested for the plan, right? And so it seems, I don't know, we haven't done that with a lot of the other feedback that we've gotten necessarily, meaning like gone through it and yea or nay, we sort of divvied up kind of, okay, this is all sort of, I'm going to focus on this part, you're going to focus on this part, here's all the materials we've gathered. It should reflect that, right? And so I don't know necessarily if the, so I mean, part of this is none of us, there is no written down process for what we should do. And so I think it's totally relevant to have a little bit of a conversation, not to drag it out necessarily, but like to, you know, how do we treat these relative to everything that we've, you know, already put in the plan? And, you know, this is one more piece of feedback from the community. But just because it's coming now doesn't necessarily mean we should change anything either. But I don't know, like, it just struck me that, like, as a group, does it make sense to go through these things one by one when I don't necessarily know the, you know, the natural resources section and all the bits and bobs to it as well as you do, Bill, right? And that you'd be able to go through and say, oh, these things are really like central quick fixes, and this is something bigger. And so I wonder if as a first stage, we might need to, you know, for each of, like, if we went through all the comments and organized, like, which comments fit into which section of the plan, we could sort of go through them, which I haven't cut them all apart and organized them in any way, but we can sort of like separate them out into two piles. One is like, this stuff is like totally makes sense, doesn't, you know, it's either typo, mischaracterization, a totally obvious thing that just was missing. And then bigger things that we know are going to take more time. Those are things then that we could meet and talk about, how those sit relative, and like, hey, this is going to take a while to do. So I'm suggesting that way, that might be one way to process all of this feedback without giving it sort of undue weight over all the other feedback that we've already put into the plan. But that's my first kind of reaction to it, I guess, to suggesting we should go through these one by one because I've read through them all one by one. I don't know that necessarily we need to sit and say, oh, well, this does make sense for your section. I don't know.
Val, your thoughts?
Yeah, no, I was thinking the same thing. It relates more to section by section. I highlighted where I thought there was something that was perhaps doable. I think a lot of the suggestions in here were probably not that, well, doable, actually, within our, with our resources and everything, you know, like a whole dozen next extra maps and things like that, which would be great to have. I don't think that we, and so those things we can kind of, you know, skip over at this point. It would be great for future, you know, reference. I think that the idea of giving directions for the next planning revision is an important thing, you know, and, you know, we could be a little more clear on that. I think that Chad Novelli in his, he included language in his that made it also very clear that it's really only important that they begin a process, and we can state some of these things. But yeah, it's very hard because some of the, a lot of the comments really have to be located. And is that what your spreadsheet was doing?
Well, no, the spreadsheet was looking for how much was maybe common. Like, so if something was mentioned, I put some big topics down, and if several other people mentioned it, then I would note that they did. I was trying to look for commonalities, and I didn't come up with a whole lot. That was the problem. I mean, I will say that quite a few people mentioned things about trails. South Hill Rec Way and other trails got one of the bigger numbers of mention. Six people voiced support, one person said no. Zoning got a fairly large number of specific mentions. Five people said yes, one person said no, and that's in the written comments. Other stuff, it's just like one, two, or three people mentioned something about town granted easements, health clinic, cell tower siding, solar farms, internet access, mentioning Speedsville, preserving farmland, better public transport, and, you know, one person mentioned Teaker. So what I, but what I heard Charles saying that might work is to sort of use this as a triage session. I don't want to just divvy everything up. I think it'd be good to go through as a group and say, yeah, we think that's important to follow up on, or no, it's not. At the very least, I went on as a group to make the decision of, well, yeah, we'll try to add something on this in this section or not. So in that sense, we will be maybe going through the comments one by one. But I also agree, we won't necessarily get all of the work done today because some of it is follow up, and we have to decide, yeah, that's worth doing because it's going to be a lot of work. Like, you know, my lovely wife really wants us to write a definition of what farms are in Carolina and go out there and find them all. And it's a great idea, but I told her I just didn't think we had that level of time and energy. But she's right, that'd be a good thing to do.
Sort of like there was commentary in there also about local businesses and actually spending more time. And that's, we've sort of dealt with that a little bit in the livability section with some of the goals or actions about trying to canvas, you know, all the businesses that do exist. But, you know, that's not going to be put together on a timeline that dovetails. You know, that's an action for that section, you know what I mean? Like, it's, the town's comprehensive plan isn't a comprehensive inventory of the town, right? Which is, I think, an important thing that we're, we need to juggle against some of these ideas because what it is, is supposed to be, you know, that aspirational blueprint by which a town can grow in the way or can live, people can live in the way that the town says it wants to. And what we hear is we need more information about farms and farming. We need more information about businesses in order to do A, B, and C, right? But we don't need, I mean, we can include the information that we have right now. But I mean, it's not that having a comprehensive inventory of all these things is necessarily important to the plan's success. It's, in fact, giving a very concrete, it's displaying a very concrete need that then the town can act on because there's only so much time that we have as well, you know. So it's going to take more than just us to do a lot of these things. So that's the other part of it, and having the town board or having the community be more of a part of it, I think, is part of the power of having it recognize this is a deficit that we want to fill because we want to achieve these other things that we need this information in order to do.
All right, Catherine, do you have anything else you want to say at this point? I just turned off video, which is fine.
No, I just, you were getting a little fuzzy, so I turned it off. I think just going, starting to go through the comments, I mean, you know, because certainly all the typos, right? Like, a perfect example is like, if, you know, the word town is not capitalized, we just need to go through and like capitalize it. If there's something that needs to be, you know, spelling needs to be changed, I think we should just do that.
Right. Are you suggesting, Catherine, that someone have the document, you know, the Word document version up and do those changes today? I wasn't quite sure I follow what you meant.
I think so. Is that, you had said you have two screens up, is that what you said?
Yeah, well, but the one was actually just has the PDFs of all the comments on it. I don't, let's see, it's a very old clunky computer that I'm doing that on. But I do have the Word file on my more modern laptop here, so let me just pull that up.
Or I could do it, if we pull up the plan and then share the screen.
I can do that, I think. Let me just try to get there. I'm not seeing any of you right now because I'm clicking through on my computer, trying to get to your guys' comprehensive plan. There it is. And I think it's this one. All right, so I now have it open. I'm gonna, I guess, do you guys want me to share my screen now and start showing that? Or, because some of it, not everything will be, meaning we have to go into that document.
Well, I would think that if you could make a note to just do that, that would be enough for now.
A note to do X.
You know, for example, you know, with the capitalization of that. And there are various kinds of typos that were referred to throughout, but.
Okay, I'm okay either way. It might be, our just like, like trying to find everywhere town refers to Caroline, which would be capitalized, but other times when town is simply a different term of town, it shouldn't be, that may be our just in the group. If we want to go that way of making a note, if someone out there, not me, could be the record keeper of, yes, we need to make X typo correction, that would be good. So do I have a volunteer for that task?
We're just looking for someone to.
Yeah, someone to record, yeah.
Write down the typos that need to be corrected, okay.
Which could be a copying, pasting from document, just otherwise, you know, it's crazy. Yeah, I need someone to help me keep track of them because.
Basically, I guess for me, like, I just want them to be made on the copy that's going to sit there and be sort of the, kind of the, sorry, my cat's tail is in the way. Basically, if we're all making, like, I want to have one copy on which they're made that then gets shared back to all of us so that it's, and I think you have the most.
I have the copy, yes, I agree with that. I mean, I've given it to you all.
List while we're working here, oh my god.
The one thing that changed, so we all, you know, I sent out the draft to all of you. And then we posted the PDF on the website. And then I started working with someone to make an ADA compliant version. And a few small changes occurred because of that. Partly because pagination's got different, and so I, like, in my section, reworded something so the page break was better. And various other little changes happened, and then she did some magic to make it ADA compliant as well. But, so I have that version, which is very subtly different from the one that was sent out to you all. So I will definitely make changes to that, and then once they're made, go out. And not this instant, but either at this meeting or the next one, which, by the way, we're scheduled for the second Thursday in October. We need to decide layout, like, are we going to go with two columns? And are we going to add some more pictures and stuff like that? But let's work on comments today and see what goes with that stuff. So I have indeed copied all the PDFs onto my old, old, old Windows 98 computer. And I'm going to hope they're going to open up despite the acrobat, yeah, okay. So I'm just going to go through them in order, which means by, they're alphabetized by first name because that's how I named them. So Anne Marie and Tim Johnson brought up, I think, what in the end, I'll fill this out for you about the vision map. So their specific concern was the vision map shows a housing focus area, and then the natural resource inventory discusses the view sheds and how there's a view right onto that housing focus area. Basically, they mentioned this conflict. And I think Don Barber also had a mention about housing focus areas and aquifers. And you'd want to have a dense housing where you have a good, a high productivity aquifer. So I think both those comments speak to the fact that we have more information now than when this map was made in 2006. We, as a planning board, did not revisit that map. Were including it sort of for completeness, I think. And I, and honestly, I think that one thing we might need to therefore do is say, this actually, in the near term, like the next couple of years, needs to be revised because we realize it is in conflict. You know, that more information's available than was when it was first created, and it should be reexamined based on that. And that might be the way to essentially handle what Anne Marie's saying here. And that would be probably a phrase on that page that seem reasonable. I've got a thumbs up from Catherine, so.
That also sit as a, like, an action anywhere in any of this? Or update the vision plan map, which, in which section would that sit in? Is that a natural resources section?
You know, it may, so there's no, I mean, it's general, right? It, the vision map talks about everything. If there were actions, I can't remember, in the snapshot of changes section, that might be where it is because it's really a planning tool. And that change that, but I'm not sure I put any actions there, I could either add them or it could go in each one. You know, as Catherine has said before, we sort of, there's no harm in some sense in repeating things. So I don't, I don't know where to put it. It could go in the mineral protection section for sure.
I think snapshot of growth sounds great, even if it's just a, you know, maybe it's not, if there is no actions and that's, if there are no actions in that section, maybe it's just a strongly worded statement where it fits in there, where it's obvious. But, yeah, I don't know what anybody else feels like.
Nobody else? Okay. Yeah, I think that that probably makes the most sense. I don't want to set aside an action in that section because there'd be very other obvious actions one maybe would have written in that section. But I think I agree with you, a statement, a strong statement that it should be redone. And then a sort of a disclaimer on the actual map page itself is probably the way to go. Okay.
But also, you know, there, I personally have, there's a fundamental distinction between, I don't think that they're mutually exclusive necessarily either. This is where review, a more rigorous review process would work because there are certain ways that one could have housing, incentivized housing, that isn't, doesn't bar views.
Right.
I mean, so it's one of these complex issues.
Right, and that's something that could be taken up in the revision of the vision map.
Right.
Moving forward, acknowledging that it's a complicated issue and that the housing focus area, a couple of years after the original comprehensive plan, was also said to be a great, great view. And how well do those two things mesh?
Right.
And the community can kind of weigh in on it.
All right. Agreed. The next comments are from Chad Novelli. And he's got a bunch of things. So one thing he says is he's, he repeats our quote about, geez, I don't know if you guys want to pull this up, this is like, he quotes our statement about the purpose of comprehensive planning is to identify a clear and compelling vision for the future and to develop strategies to reach that vision. And he says that's so important, maybe it should be the beginning of its own separate paragraph on this page. You know, this is going to be a nightmare, I know. I don't, you know, I don't know how to go to talk about that. Do people want us to leave that as is, or we want to follow up on Chad the day of?
I mean, I think the main gist of what he's saying to me in those first couple paragraphs is basically to include some information, a statement or a description of, and we have like the whole section on how we gathered all the feedback from the community. But just to distill that down to a line or two when it comes to explaining, you know, how this came to be, because somebody might not read the appendix. I don't know, that's kind of my, I don't know if it needs to be the beginning of its own separate paragraph. But, you know, I like his statement that it might be helpful to put somewhere in the beginning a clear statement of how the actions came to be, or just that there's, you know, broad canvassing of the community using this, this, and this described in appendix B, you know, that formed the nucleus for both these sections and the actions and goals that are described within them. I think that's what he's getting at here.
That's what he goes, I didn't read that paragraph yet, that's, go ahead, Catherine.
I was saying, I'm feeling silly because I feel like, don't we have that somewhere? I mean, do we not?
In the appendix.
Okay.
I think, right? I mean, there's, in the appendix, there's a whole description about how all of the, you know. Right, but I think he's advocating.
I think the whole thing that he's saying is just to put that at the beginning of the paragraph.
Right.
Which should be enough.
Right.
Right. I mean, I think that's okay, it's a general statement. And then we talk about the 2006 plan in relationship, and then the new one.
All right.
I believe that Chad Novelli is always right, so, yes.
So, I mean, he makes two points, two closely related points. The first was just that particular phrase about the purpose of planning is to identify a clear and compelling vision and make that like front and center. And I'm catching something like that, and Chad's got a lot of editing and writing experience in his background. But he does go on to say, and this is what Charles is now getting into, where he said that, as he read through it, he wondered where some things like the action statements came from. And there, again, you know, we extracted them from all the various inputs and from the goals, you know, all lead into actions. So in some sense, the action statements, other than the ones that were grandfathered in from the old comp plan, came from us, written by us, but they were resting on all that public input. Do we need to say that somewhere? I, you know, I guess I sort of felt, no, because that's the whole point of the plan, is that the planning board extracts public, you know, feedback and then puts it out. But maybe it needs to be a more clear statement, so that's, I think, what Chad is asking.
I didn't know what the planning board did until I got on the planning board. So my guess is not everybody knows how the process works, no matter how many times we might say it in a meeting that one to three people in the community come and listen to us talk at, you know what I mean? So I don't think there's anything wrong with highlighting that, to me. I'm looking at the first paragraph in the snapshot of changes, you know, the last sentence of the first paragraph says, various planning strategies that advance the goals, many residents have articulated, are suggested in the actions throughout this document. But it doesn't tie necessarily those actions in the same way to the feedback, right? So there could be a stronger statement about how those, I mean, I don't know, or, yeah.
All right, so what, I mean, he in particular was first commenting on the introduction, basically. He says page II, so I have to pull it up to see what that is. But, so we could write in there, add a sentence or two.
Well, the sentence is, the sentence is there, it's just in the middle of the paragraph.
Right, so that, but then also add something in that same, on that same page that says the action items were developed, I mean, something, I don't know what it's going to say, but developed from the community input in our, you know, and basically essentially our outgrowth of the goals articulated by community residents?
I think it could totally work there, and then we've said it at the top of the document. And it would, it wouldn't seem out of place, it wouldn't seem sort of shoehorned in. It's talking about, and that would sort of be its own paragraph potentially with comprehensive planning and all the feedback and input that it took to put this together. Look at this, we're already on page II, so.
Yeah, I know.
Moving ahead.
All right. Okay, so are we comfortable that we'll do something there? And the next question is, who's going to do that? But any rate, I think Charles has taken note that we are going to do something to explain how the actions came to be. Good evening, Chad's comments, he liked the diversity statement, then he says about creating, he also liked, okay, he liked the fact that we're going to create opportunities with time to develop guidelines, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, so here's a typo-like thing or grammar thing. I will also warn you, my wife, who has also worked as an editor, is sort of going through the comp plan line by line. And hopefully the next day or two will have something that I can share around. But any rate, when it comes to looking at that stuff, it'll basically be grammar and typo-type corrections. So on page 18, he mentions a problem with grammar. He said halfway down under future development, air and water quality need to be part of the development approval process. And I think I must have written, as well as promoting environmentally friendly building practices. And he was suggesting maybe as do, so.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, sure. Yep, good, all right, so we'll do that. Also, there's a typo.
On page, yeah, that's just a thing.
So A R E S goes to A R E A S, so that.
That's, let's see, halfway.
Yeah, that's easy, I will find it later, so I think Charlie, I'll probably.
That's the second paragraph.
Yeah. So you can just, Charles, for your notes, you can just sort of say, you know, Chad's page twenty comment, do, right? You know, something like that.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm doing. Yeah.
On page twenty four, he says, is it possible to put stream names in the map?
Yeah, I think you should do that, Bill.
Yes, right. Are you serious? So, yeah, again, I don't have control of the maps in that sense, right? I mean, I had, I mean, I, we could hire someone to go in and edit the PDF maybe, but I don't. You know, right, it was made, and that's actually a general problem. They were made by cooperative extension. The guy who made them isn't there anymore. And I already tried to contact them and haven't heard back yet about whether they have source files for a different correction that probably is important to me. So no, I would probably not put the stream names in the map because it might be a fair amount of. Overhead or it might not. I could explore it if people thought it was important.
Well, I I think that a lot of them don't have names. From what I, I mean. Some of the things that I know that they're identified that are identified there. In my neighborhood, don't really, they're seen as offshoots of Six Mile Creek. You know, feeder or something like that. So it's, it, I don't know, it gets difficult.
Okay. So if some are easy, I'll do it otherwise, I would have asked them to do it otherwise we won't. Chad notes, and several people have noted this, about formula business restrictions, and this is a good point, you know. That's not a phrase that people sort of are familiar with now. I know at least eight people who are very familiar with that phrase. So he suggests maybe a footnote or some kind of reference somewhere. I am. I'm good with that. I think indeed maybe like a footnote definition, since it's the first, the first time that phrase is used, people think that's fine.
Sure. The first time it appears, we can, I mean, we could even do it right there in the text. It's pretty clear.
Yeah.
It's clear that somebody else missed the point where, I mean, somebody else. Had a different concept of it when they referred to things like the Ithaca Farmers Market and Wegmans as being possible formula businesses, but. Technically, they're not because they were designed specifically for those locations.
Right. So let's go with. Yeah. So we'll do, so a line in the text rather than a footnote. People care which way?
Either way.
We don't have any footnotes anywhere else.
Snapshot changes does, and they're actually a bit of a problem, I can refer to it because.
Yeah.
And 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 the reasons, it adds adds a disability act compliance issue because they have to be read in the right order. And I don't think the person actually got that right.
Actually, you have footnotes, you do have footnotes in this section, sort of, where you have references, but.
Yeah.
Which are not footnotes, I guess.
Right.
I think in the text, though, for this particular thing is fine, because as Val's saying, it's like very simple and clear.
Okay. The task force is, they exactly have a working definition of one, but can actually. Put something together for our task force and I'll look at that and other readings and. You know, put some says wording for you guys for a form of business definition. I mean, some, they involve like uniformity of product and uniforms and. Multiple locations, but limits ten or twenty or something, you know, I think basically that's the, you know, anywhere where having the same look is important to the business, basically. Okay. He says something about the appendix A reflections to see what you're doing. That's good.
So he said, I think that just there is unclear about original, like what was. The way it's currently formatted, what was the original action? What was the current reviewer result or status? So he just gave a little. Like prologue on that's sort of like how those things got there and why some of them maybe weren't done. But then he's not sure necessarily which ones are which. And that could be a formatting thing. I don't know.
Yeah. So I'm confused that because I thought that Val did an excellent job showing which was sort of the wording extracted from the plan and which was the analysis by going to italics, indented. So to me, it's quite clear and Tim agrees. So Chad, but. One thing I do think that a couple of people, as I read through, seemed to be a little confused, thinking that that, that the stuff in that appendix. Were recommendations of this plan. And that is not how I'm taking that. I'm taking that this is essentially, we wanted to reflect on the old plan. Get some sense of what we did get done and didn't get done. But just because we mentioned five year goals in this appendix, that's not now a five year goal for Caroline. And if people agree with my take on that, then we probably need a disclaimer sentence in there at the beginning of that appendix saying. That this is not essentially the action items of this plan. Those are earlier in the text.
Maybe we have to just in the title there, say overview of five year actions from the previous plan.
It's what it says just about, it says.
I know, it's.
The title says reflections and assessments of action items in the two thousand six comprehensive plan is what the title says. So I mean, it's hard to get. More. Specific than that. And and this isn't, this isn't, you know, calling Chad's reading into question here. It's that there's a lot of words in this document, you know. So I wonder.
Several people were clearly confused based on the comments I read, and so we need to make it more clear, right? I mean, so I think it's pretty clear. Most people got it. But a few people didn't, so it's not clear enough. That's how I take it.
So maybe we just say again, overview of previous five year actions.
This might be something, a place where formatting could be useful, right? Just in terms of how the thing looks to the eye.
You may have.
You know, I mean, I think some of this confusion might just be that it's all in this one. You know. Word document.
Okay, so. When are we gonna, I think probably formatting is is next meeting? I don't know. If you have any suggestions, Catherine, on how to format that in a way that makes it clear?
I mean, we don't have to format it now. I'm just saying that I think I I'm hearing all the points and I I I agree with all, it's like I hear that it feels confusing to multiple people, which makes me think we really. Need to do something about it. I also hear that. We've already made it really clear for for us. So I think that that's just a matter of like, we've looked at it a hundred times. So. It just needs to stand out if it says. You know, action items from, you know, whatever, five year actions as of two thousand six plan. Either bold, italicized, underlined, something or other. And then separated from action items from this plan. If that's important to people. I mean, personally for me, I don't really care. I don't think it makes any difference. Like, these are the action items that are in place. Right now in our town. I don't care whether they came from two thousand six or right now, but that's just me. And I guess. A popular opinion. So that's fine.
I mean, some of the things were acted upon and some of the things couldn't be acted upon. And so there's a variety, I mean, that's why when I first did this, I I. Thought that might happen. And I did a version where it was laid out as two columns.
Right.
Left column was the one thing and the right, so there were boxes essentially like a, like an Excel spreadsheet, but. And maybe that's the, so maybe, yes, it's a layout. Issue or something.
Or my expectation or understanding was that anything that was sort of left undone, that still felt like it could be done, we already incorporated in the actions in this plan. Maybe there's, you know, so that's why I sort of felt this was. Really, these weren't the action items because we had all the ones that were still relevant. In the plan, or at least they should be there.
And I guess, you know, this, I don't want to get too sidetracked by this, but um. When it comes to formatting and spending a lot of time formatting the plan and discussing that. Given that we're going to be handing this plan to the town board and then they're going to. Take a whack at it and potentially be formatting it the way that they think it might might want to be formatted. Is this more of like? I don't know how much time it makes sense for us to spend formatting something that we're going to hand over to them as a draft. And they're gonna, they're gonna sort of take their eye to it. And ultimately, they're gonna.
I I I'm gonna take Tim's comments on this one.
But I mean.
Format as well as you can.
But I guess, I guess from, I I don't want to sort of spend time formatting something when maybe something's not going to be included, I guess, just as an example. Or if something needs to be built out to more reflect something the town board wants to make sure is prioritized. So.
Right.
I just want to put that out there as a, because. You know, I don't.
You have feelings about this whole action item, item?
Huh?
I was just wondering Tim's impressions of the the action item question, because that seems most important, given town board. Actionables.
I mean, I guess. I don't have a strong opinion about it one way or the other, you know, I think whichever way you think is. Best, because I thought it was fairly clear to me.
And I guess it's a, Charles, it's my response on that is, I think the plan, the town board would love to have something as close to final form as possible. If if I understand the way they work and I'm, you know, they're not going to, I mean, no offense, they're very busy, unless they do. They're not going to go out and say, oh, this needs a picture of the town hall here. This needs a picture of a rural valley there. I think that that really sort of falls to us to figure that part in. If they then want to go to some other slightly different layout, that's fine. But I think we need to give them all the pieces roughly laid out. I would love to punt on that. But I feel that's probably not appropriate.
Because we're going to be in a time crunch to try to get this resolved as soon as possible. The better shape that comes to us, the better shape will be, that's all.
All right. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, I think the next thing was on page thirty nine. I think he suggested having the. Additional actions suggested by the twenty oh six comprehensive plan. I think we should put that in.
Yeah, sure.
In the title.
You skipped over two quick things. He had some point about. Under land use guidance, it should be mentioned that the site plan review was written and passed, and then the review board was created. Uh, that must just be in the summary of what happened. I think that was, again, that was language we took from either Mark or Don. So if that's true, then, which I assume it is, then then Charles has put a note that we need to make sure it's clear that. Review were created after site plan law passed. And then he says on page thirty eight. So that, yeah, so this actually, so he asked, we we have a phrase in there. It says, a large part of the presentation and development of small business in Caroline involves restricting the presence of large scale business. And national and international form of businesses, he says, whose language? He went to footnote. My. I believe that was extracted from something given to us, Val, by Don.
I don't know, I, where this was. I don't know. I think it's probably my language, just is trying to summarize some of these things.
Yeah.
Right. And so to tie that into the other aspects that has to do with the formula businesses that's mentioned then.
Right. So I guess the question is, you know. What needs to go, what does? Yeah. So I I I wouldn't. Feel that, I mean, it's a statement of obviously of. You know, an opinion, value, whatever. Do we, do people think we need some more attribution for it or more support for it or, you know?
Well, I mean, this came, again, I actually, that came from the the surveys, the initial surveys was the idea of protecting. Small businesses. From large scale businesses and, you know, others that would be coming into the town. And that's why, and then it quotes a comprehensive plan, the twenty oh six one. I think is encouraging locally owned businesses that integrate with rural residential, et cetera.
Right.
For me, this goes back to the very beginning of. Wondering what is cited and what is not cited and basically having a whole comprehensive plan where nothing is cited. You know, as. Matter of course, or tradition, or or whatever. So for whatever that's worth, just to like, offer the perspective, because then in like. My rural character plan, for example, it was very intentionally heavily cited at the outset to of achieving definitions. And then the feedback was my language was too formal. So I think we just need to have. Some agreements about how this is gonna go. I mean, I don't think that that needs to be cited, Val. I agree. It's like you're. Making a statement based on feedback and that's the language of the document, just like any other statement. But I think because this feels new. Or potentially. Triggering to some people, it's like it stands out. You know, I don't think anyone would look at the rest of the document and say like. Who said that watersheds preserve, you know, like, give me a citation, like. Because it's just, that's just kind of what's in the document. For whatever that's worth, that's my feeling. So it's like, if there are certain things that. Would be optimized by having a citation, then then we should put them in, otherwise. You know, I think it's it's defensible. To have that just be the language that you put in.
Right. And again, I think this is, this is where he cites Wegmans and Ithaca Farmers Market. As being the examples of formula businesses.
Right. And Wegmans to some extent would be, but the Farmers Market not at all.
And Wegmans is sort of, and the Ithaca Wegmans isn't, the original.
Right, exactly. They have. All right. So I think finding that, right, page thirty nine, I think he's just adding, suggesting adding two thousand six.
Right, I think, I think that makes sense.
I agree with page fifty, he just tables upside down, agreed. I just copied from that, I agree. That's fine, you know, flip it so that the most important's on top going down at the least. That's great. I can do that. He has some other acknowledgements. Yeah, that's fine. I had asked, I asked him and Edwards previously for anybody else to be acknowledged and. He's getting me a list now.
Yeah.
And then I think, yes, so. This came up a little bit a while ago, and I think Frank Proto mentions it too. Just some statement about the plan update schedule process. Where would we want to put that? Any idea where to put it?
Is this an us thing or is this a town board thing?
Well, I I I guess people were saying that the comprehensive plan, I mean, people. Two or three folks mentioned that it'd be nice if the comprehensive plan gave some sense that it. Needs to be a live document that is that is looked at again. You know, in in five or 10 years. And I and I agree, I mean, the the actual language, there's a state language that suggests. A periodic review. So that was just the sentiments. Some people said, oh, you ought to have something in there that says that you're, that we're going to look at it again, I think. He said.
But it is, it is true, isn't it, that the. The language says that it will be reviewed regularly? I mean. Already.
That's the stipulation for a general comprehensive plan.
Yeah, did we put that language in there somewhere? I think is one of the questions. Now Chad's point here is, could we come up with a more streamlined electronic way to do little parts of it? And we all talked about that too. And the answer is, yeah, perhaps, but. Honestly, that's going to be somebody else's job to put together than than me.
Well, could that be an action step?
Certainly could be.
I don't know.
Sure. We could put that as an action to.
Streamline the process of the comprehensive plan for anyone reading this document, who cares?
Right.
And and you know, I will honestly, I am of two minds. There's one part that, oh, maybe like little pieces should be reviewed every few years because you don't want to get too out of. Touch with changing it. But honestly, as you, we've seen, like. This is a big lift. It's a lot of work. If you really want to go do a survey again, it's like, all right, every 10 years, that's plenty frequently enough to get into this kind of, you know, I don't want to be looking at this thing again for a good number of years. So. I see it both ways.
But you've also got to, you've also got to let the the comprehensive plan. Breathe long enough for the action items to be addressed.
Right.
If you go revising it every two or three years, that would be chaos.
No, I think they stated five or six as a kind of, the state suggests that. And that's where Chad's comment, though, that 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 as the time in which one begins to work. The state law noted as long as a planning agency showed due diligence in working on updating, then the full provisions of the law remained in effect.
Well, as you can see, it's taken four years to get to this point, right?
From the beginning.
Six or seven.
I was thinking it was two thousand sixteen, maybe that was just when the survey went out. I can't remember. But so five or six years starting to work on making an update. Might be reasonable. One place we could put a sentence that just explicitly says that. Is or add to a sentence is in the end of the introduction, the very last sentence says, it's our hope, the plan. That this plan will serve as a guiding document for robust discourse, community engagement and policy decisions as they arise. There could be a statement there that says something about, you know, revisiting and reviewing this document as a living, you know. Guidebook for. The town is an important blah, blah, blah. And then the last sentence may have served to unify our residents in a shared commitment. You know, if we can slide a sentence in right there that. Doesn't get in a technical way that we're going to review it every four years and do this.
Yeah, I wouldn't commit to the timeframe.
Yeah, so maybe I'll.
Make a note of that. Great. All right. And then he mentions. Yeah, I mean, you know, the Brooklyn Community Center is gonna try to, you know, get themselves ready with the generator, et cetera, for an emergency shelter. Yeah, I don't know. If you guys are reading this thing, I'm. You know, it's one of the things that they, oh, yeah, nice idea, but I don't necessarily know that we need to go there in the plan.
The only thing would be if, I mean, weren't we asked to address a kind of an emergency?
Resilience.
Uh, something?
Yeah, the climate, you know, yeah, climate. Yeah, the climate, you know, yeah, climate resilience sort of thing, right? That the, 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 the town actually, that is ongoing, I think, I can't remember if they passed it now. Tim, if you're listening, did the, has the town board already passed like a climate resiliency thingy? Or is that still coming?
If they did, they did it before my time, a year and a half ago.
Okay, no, no, it is recent, it was, it was like, I think the report might be done now, but maybe not.
I think I heard about it, yeah.
I mean, I think that that's what, I think that that is ongoing.
Right, okay. All right, that gets us through, one more.
C.
Yeah, well, we have one more C, Connie O'Brien.
I know.
Which is, which is quick. This is what I will try to do, since, since she, she mostly, you know, she's mentions Kline Center being shown wrong in the maps. She expresses support for the South Hill Rec Way and stuff like that. So as far as the map goes, I will get, I will try to get a hold of the cooperative extension and see if they can move that. It was just, yeah, they definitely just put the word in the wrong place. I would love to fix that because it's sort of, you know, bad and embarrassing. It's obviously not the end of the world, but I'll see if we can get it fixed.
I wonder if it has to do with the layers of the maps? Because I mean, the other comment that Boiseville was mislocated on that map seems to be, because it's correct in every other map. It seems that the thought moved.
Is it actually, so that would be something I, so, uh, because it is correct in general, I was quite, I was confused by that comment. So which map was it wrong on?
On these, on one dash.
I just needed.
All right.
Maybe we can treat it when we get to that note.
Yes, because, I mean, that's my map.
I said the very first one, one, one.
Oh. Okay, that's a map from, not so easily fixed, but all right, all right, we'll get to that.
Okay.
Because I thought was in general correct, sorry, so that's Connie, we'll try to fix that.
Okay.
I have not gone through Don's stuff because he did it, you know, little sticky notes throughout the document. Do people want to deal with Don's now or some other day?
There.
Yeah.
There's a lot, yeah, I think a lot of those things also have to do with things that are action items or things that have been done. And some of it doesn't involve, it's too, it's almost too complex to, to start incorporating, I think, too detailed. But, I mean, yeah.
I'm willing.
He talks about the aquifers and things like that in relationship to housing. And he talks about the, he questions the idea of having the right to farm signs, whatever they, that would achieve.
So here's, here's maybe, does this seem like a plan that, again, I meant, because it was more difficult to read. I didn't go through all of Don's stuff, it's the only one I haven't read thoroughly. But would it make sense for each of us to say, okay, read it ourselves and say, okay, here's like the few I think that are sort of actionable that are, we should follow up on as opposed to going through all of them one by one? Or how do we want to, I'd like to put them aside sort of for now, so we can get through more. But I don't know if we should look at it independently or look at it together later, what do you guys think?
I personally think there are so many comments. I mean, what I did was I went through the whole thing, but then I focused on the ones that were in my section. Because honestly, I don't really feel like I know your guys' sections particularly. I mean, like, it's there and I read them and I, you know, I trust you. So I, I don't feel as much of a personal investment, if I'm being honest, to specific language in the stuff that I didn't write. But anything that was in the rural character section, I was like, you know, it's like my baby, so I'm gonna like look at it. So I mean, if we each do read that in that way for our respective sections and then come together, maybe that makes most sense.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, I will say, I will read all of his comments. Because it might be that something in the livability is important, but I want to make sure Charles, you know, dealt with it or something like that. And, and it is, you know, it is our, all of our document at this point. And that's, but I, indeed, on rural character, I'm much less comfortable wanting to change something around. Because like you, Kevin, I didn't write that, I didn't know all the things you were always thinking about. So we still have our areas of expertise to some extent. Okay, so I think Edwards basically just said, "Great job."
Yep.
Ellen Harrison then.
Ellen Harrison.
All right. So her first point had to do about changes to land and once it's mucked over, it's mucked over forever. So she specifically wanted to add.
I like that wording. I do like that wording that she suggests, I mean, because I remember during the meeting she said that. And it was very quotable. At least as a point, it's a good thing to, to mention.
The first point.
Yeah, I mean, that, that suggested wording, you know.
But land is forever unavailable, once developed, that kind of thing.
I mean, I think that's a good point, no matter the use, right? It doesn't matter if it's going into farm, farming or, or development. It's like, once it's mucked over, as you said, it's like, it's, it's on forever. The second point I have more of an issue with, but.
Yeah, we'll get the, so I think the sense I'm getting is that well, that adding that language is fine or something like that is fine. Yeah, again, I mean, yeah, once you take this, the top surface soil and you put it into the subsurface and you look along, you drive over them with a bulldozer, it's a lot different, you know, for sure.
I would not add the parentheses with California in it though, personally.
That was about what I was about to say. I don't, I mean, sometimes things are very topical, because like right now, California is burning. But I think that in the five or 10 year thought of the plan, that will seem sort of like an acronym. So, so yeah, I do think, somebody else made a comment, we'll get there eventually, about, you know, why is it important to preserve farmland? Is it really important to do or not? Maybe that's not important in New York State or New York area. And I think Ellen's point and other people is that, well, that may be how it appears now, but what about 30 years from now? We don't really know, obviously, but, you know, one view is.
It's an interesting thing, because you go back, you know, a hundred years and there was, you know, 20% of the forest in Tompkins County that there is now, right? You know, it's, it, a whole bunch of it was being farmed. And it just wasn't economical.
Right, I'm, I'm, yeah, sorry, I have lots of feelings about this, obviously, I'll just keep my.
No, and I, and I have no, like, I have no, it's not that I have no feelings, I'm not, I'm not presenting anything. It's just sort of like, there's always a baseline that people are gonna like think about as what they feel like is most important. And so as a town, I don't know, it sounds like agriculture is an important baseline for the town, you know, and so.
But it says, because of what? I mean, it's just like goes back to, I don't know, I'm glad Ken, again, you know, you're on this call, so I don't want to speak for you. But it's like Ellen's point to me lumps in with some of the stuff that Ken was saying, that some of the stuff that I've been saying and others around. You can't like legislate farming. I mean, you know, if there's no economic gain for, if there's no economic viability for farming, like, we can say that this land along seventy nine, you know, fantastic, but it doesn't really matter. So I feel, I feel pretty strongly actually in agreement with Ken, like, you know, you cannot legislate what the land is gonna be used for unless you buy it. So we can say as a town that we would prefer that it be in agricultural use. And I would prefer that it's in agricultural use. I think people who own that land would prefer that it's in agricultural use. But if there's no way to keep it that way, we, we can't legislate what people do with their land, I mean.
Well, well, I mean, and I agree actually quite strongly with that, which is sort of why one looks for some character encouragements. And Ken and I have had this conversation about, you know, because it's just really hard. I mean, it's, it's, it's a low profit margin at best, right? It's a losing proposition. Ken mentioned some other things about people aging and so, but when I have talked to cooperative extension people, they always say, yeah, basically, it's, it's the dollars and cents, right? It's the profitability. We can't as a town affect that other than through maybe a conservation easement, which is, you know, and, and as Ken's pointed out in other meetings, I think not with us. Some farmers have tried that and that money sort of, they can use it up pretty quickly and then they're right back where, where they were. So it has to be thought of pretty carefully.
Right, like, would we rather we have quote unquote open space with solar farms rather than?
Perhaps.
I mean, that's an aesthetic, there's like, it's all subjective. But I mean, there are ways to preserve land without it being farmed.
Right, key point, and so I agree totally, right, you can't say this ought to be farmed. Because maybe, and Ken points out, you know, it's, it's gonna grow up into brush and trees, and that's true. But then it can be turned into a farm 30 years from now if necessary, or if it's a solar farm. But if it's obviously a Walmart, that's hard to do. So I agree, you can't legislate that, but that's something towns to look at very carefully. If we want there to be land that could be farmed years from now.
Right.
Is that a high enough value that we need to do something about that?
Well, that, but then it wouldn't be us anyway, I guess I'm suggesting, then it needs to be zoned agricultural. And then that goes into the town board's jurisdiction, that's not our jurisdiction.
So her second point, you said you had some issues with Catherine. And basically, she's talking about the conflict that, you know, any land that's valuable for agriculture often, is often good for development, flat well drains, and she said she wanted, again, a particular language about some locations with the, then the town with excellent drainage could support a public sewer system. However, these areas may also be important agricultural land that should not be developed. That was her statement.
Well, I thi, I think that's kind of beyond our expertise. I mean, isn't things like watershed and. Better qualified to say that, and I think maybe what we said is sufficient.
Charles?
I'm just going, I'm getting more context by looking at it in the, in the, in the, you know, so right now, we're talking about the assessment of what has happened since the two thousand and six plan, right? That's the section that we're talking about here. And so it's.
Right, and, and that's again, we're, because it's page forty, it's like, there's a little bit of confusion there that, that this is a recommendation we're currently making.
Right, that's what I'm saying, like, I'm, I'm reading your feedback, but I'm looking at what it's feedback on. And I sort of think it's like, it's not, it's not sort of part of the, right, living part of this document so much moving forward. And I don't know, I think that you could, you could change this statement with a different set of language. It still talks about that value. Could be, you know, it could be valuable for lots of things rather than just for a public sewer system. I don't know, you know what I mean, like, but it's sort of in a section that I, I guess I didn't, I didn't.
Yeah.
No, this was a section that, that I did from, well, Don and Mark's comments and things. And especially, I guess, Don was really involved with the water, the watershed thing. This is all, these are all essentially conclusions that were developed in the watershed documents.
Yeah, right, so I, so, so I think, and again, I'm fine with leaving our language the way it is, given where it is in the document and given that this is like adding a value statement to what, again, I thought was a somewhat valueless assessment. Just like Mark wanted to talk more about like zoning and site plan review there and criticize one or the other. And yeah, I was not wanting to go there in that section.
I think we should be just vague, I mean.
What'd you say?
I think we should be as vague as, I don't think we need to be more specific in this.
Okay, all right, she had some minor comments about the percent that are renters. That is, I think, Charles, you may have that data already, I don't, I couldn't remember if that was in the document already, but.
Yeah, I think it's in the document.
Okay, probably good, that's fine to add it.
I like, and her, her next thing, the concept, the phrase pedestrian opportunity.
Yeah.
And the notion that the ability of children to get around and be independent is, is kind of important. And it does tie in with, as you were saying, so many people's comments about the walkways and trail systems and things, the idea of physical and mental health and all these things, which, you know, is subjective. But I think it, you know, in the times of COVID here, is really, really important. I mean, things like the, you know, like the Dryden Rail Trail has become the place to go. I mean, it's packed, you know, all the time. And that's exactly what we need, is these kinds of outlets. So it's just, it's just one more bit of ammunition, I think, in there.
Okay, so I think that sounds like a general agreement to put something like that in there.
Sure.
She talks, next comment is about neighborhood scale retail trading hamlets, adding that phrase. I'm not sure what that means. So I think I know what she's getting at.
Love it, I've never heard this phrase, but I love it.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think it has to do with smaller rather than larger, right? That's how I take that, does everyone take it that way?
Right.
Yeah, but it's sort of conflicting, like, right? So Brookton's Market, for example, would you call that a neighborhood scale? When, you know, they're advertising for, you know, three miles around to come down and get a beer. And there's people that drive up from Ithaca to see the music, you know, at least they did pre-COVID. Like, I don't know if it's neighborhood scale. I don't know, but I mean, like, it's not industrial scale. You know, like, it's sort of a, some bigs, yeah, so I don't know.
Depends on the size of your neighborhood, I guess.
Right, that's what I mean, so what is, what is a neighborhood?
I can't see neighbors anywhere.
Right, whereas.
Yeah.
I can see and hear my neighbors sometimes more than I'd like to, so.
I can too, and they're like a quarter mile away.
Yeah, so I mean, like.
The louder you get, the further you are. But it also has to do, it, it's not clear what scale means in that sense, you know, there's scale in terms of, you know, is it because it's walkable? Does it mean in terms of size, of, of actual size of structure? Or does it mean, you know, that it's something that is exactly a size that's commensurate with the town that it's in or the location that, I don't know.
Neighborhood scale profits. They should, will be cited, is this something that she just came up with? Is this like a definition that's established that we could find, you know, it's like.
We could look for it, my guess is that she's, it was nice words, but maybe it is, is out there in the planning literature. She has more experience, she was on the Town of Ithaca Planning Board at one time. So maybe she, you know, knows it actually is a phrase. I bet that Charles is Googling it right now, if I know Charles.
Yeah, you can see me looking at my other monitor. There's definitely, there's definitely webpages out there from local government commissions and Leaders for Liveable Communities titled Neighborhood Scale Planning.
And the thing is that it's one more thing that, it's one more thing that if we include, we're going to have to footnote and define, right? So.
So I mean, the, the plan talks about small businesses and local businesses, right? And I think that the combination of those two things is what I would call neighborhood scale, but maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, maybe we don't need to define it as such, just the same way we've sort of tried to leave open a wide swath of land use regulation planning that meets the team, you know, the town's needs may involve zoning, may involve formula business restrictions. We haven't come around and said the town needs this particular thing, right? And I think that maybe that's.
Committee, we also have a committee right now who's like looking into this, so I think we.
Right. All right, so, so is that a decision to, to drop the neighborhood scale thing or to put it in?
Drop it.
I would drop it.
Yeah, I would drop it, because I think the next suggestion of including commercial development makes sense because it seems to be in line with our goals there. And that might deal with the issue of what she means by, what we would, might mean by neighborhood scale. Housing and commercial development with pedestrian walkways and bikeways, I guess.
Right.
Okay, she, another vote for a form of business regulation being defined, so we'll define form of businesses. And then I think regulation of them will be perhaps clear.
Yeah.
Okay, then she says, in terms of housing development, something about scale, we don't want a trinitas. So now that I think, I don't think we have feedback from the town on what scale of residential development they do or do not favor. So I would want to be silent on that, but how do you guys feel? I mean, there have been certainly complaints to some extent about the Boiseville cottages, but a lot of people loved them too. And I would, you know, maybe you might consider that a big development, maybe, you know, I'm not sure.
I think it's all relative and I think we should not touch this with a ten foot pole.
Yeah, I think so too, because it could also be, you know, relate to the things like senior housing and all these other kinds of things.
And tax.
Yeah.
You know, we have giant tracts of untaxable land in our town, so, and lots of roads. So if we like to have money to do other things, taxes.
Yeah. Right, the blessing of Shandagan Hall, and they, the town, the state does give us a teeny bit of money, I think, Tim might know better, but.
They take a lot more of it.
Yeah. So, and bullet point again, I, I only have two screens, so I can't pull up the, she says about bullet.
It says, preserve the town's most viable agricultural land. And I think, didn't we, I think we discussed actually the use of that word viable, because we didn't, couldn't come up with any more specific. We wanted, we wanted it to not be highly specific, but.
Right, and she says, can viable just be deleted? I mean, the answer is no, because then it goes until like, we want agricultural land to be preserved and we can't dictate that. And so this is.
I mean, yeah.
And I appreciate her feedback, but it's like, this is a thank you and we.
Yeah. Fine with that, I mean, you know, viable obviously means the most productive land that is most, land is most likely to be useful for farming in its lifetime as, as that, right, sometime. So she says, "At a bullet point, encouraging the town board to hold conservation easements on appropriate lands." What do we say, we have something on conservation, I mean, I think we say the town should explore the use of town granted conservation easements. I thought that's what we put in there somewhere, am I wrong?
Yeah, no, hey, let me see, it says that.
I'm all for that, if that's not in there somewhere, but I guess. I'm all for that. If that's not in there somewhere, but I guess that that would.
Well, I wonder, is it in the, so her bullets go through yours, through the rural. You know, the rural section thirty-five. So yeah, I guess there's not anything.
So I bet if you look in the environmental protection section, that's where it is.
Right.
So, um, maybe it could.
Yeah. So underneath the actions in that section on page twenty-two, it says, explore mechanisms such as town granted conservation easements. That reduce tax liability to encourage maintaining open space in the town. So you think that that.
Actually, yeah, on page thirty-eight, the, the appendix. The original plan says outreach to landowners to have high quality farm land to promote awareness of and use of land trusts, conservation easements and other incentives for land preservation. And then we, uh, identify some of the easements. I mean, so far, there's only been one farm easement given, but.
Right. So, so what Ellen is, is asking, is suggesting is exactly what we put in the environmental section, which is the town holding conservation easements, which is very different than the town enabling someone to apply for a farm conservation easement. And very different than town encouraging people to go to the land trust and put an easement on their property. Whether the town will do that is a different question, but I think the whole point was, is one of the few mechanisms the town has to try to use a carrot rather than a stick to get land use policy moving the direction that the town sees as valuable. And it shifts the tax burden off of those who are maintaining open space onto those who are enjoying the open space, so to speak.
So are we agreed that this is already in the plan?
I agree it's already in the plan.
I mean, in page fifteen, you talk about private conservation easements, right? Which could be advertised. And that was part of the statement anyway.
Right. So, I mean, yes, I don't think we need to put, I mean, it could be, I think that her, but anyway, I think in the rural character section, you could have it or not have it, but we definitely have it in environmental protection. I'm okay with it just there. So, um, her fifth bullet point was probably, this was Catherine's wording, I think, on empower the view board on design guidelines. How did we phrase it? In there? Someone have the, it up?
Says empower the review board to utilize design guidelines to reach determinations regarding project subject, site plan review, design guidelines is, yeah, capitalized.
Because that's like a thing that we have. It wasn't like we were made up, like we want them to have design guidelines. That was a.
Right. So. And the thing is that they have design guidelines, but they don't, they don't have any tools for enforcing them.
Right. So, 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 right. So Ellen's suggested addition was develop more concrete. And I think that that's probably a good addition. Let's see what you guys think, because indeed, as you said, Val, the problem with the current design guidelines is, it's sort of like a question, you know, will your project impact X? And then that's the design guideline, right? Like, you know, we care about rural character of roads. Will you design, you know, but it doesn't say, and you must do this mitigation. It just says, come talk to us about it. And Tim knows, you know, the, the task force is now heavily into trying to figure out what can or can't be done through design guidelines. And more concrete ones, I think is probably the right language.
Well, it's Don Barber. This is where Don Barber commented exactly on his thing, that the review board doesn't need empowerment. He says, the local law needs to provide these regulatory tools.
Right.
Guidelines are not regulatory, only aspirational.
And it depends on how people decide to defend them. I mean, like people, I remember all the work that went into, but coming up with that list of guidelines. And to see them basically be, not even be like referred to, it's like personally painful, but that's my own issue. So, you know, it's, it's, yes, it's having a guideline that feels more concrete, but it's also having a review board and a town board that's willing to like try to test them out and actually say to an applicant, it, you know, are you satisfying any of these design guidelines? And if the answer is no, being willing to say, well, go back and try something else, like try again. And that is, since these guidelines have been implemented, I mean, correct me if I am wrong, but I'm fairly sure that, that have never even been attempted.
So. Tim, you want to chime in at all here or?
I mean, I don't know if they've been attempted or not. So I do think that the, the task force is likely to recommend stricter guidelines. If I, if I read the tea leaves properly. And there's still a lot of question, you know, there are a lot of very practical questions about legal. Parameters.
But I mean, does that, as an example, guideline number two says, is this application consistent with the town's comprehensive plan?
Right. I understand.
So.
Understand. Things that the task force has discussed is that perhaps posing such questions.
Right.
Invites abuse.
Right. So this, and, and, and yeah, Catherine, so there is. I think that's why Ellen's going with more concrete, because like, that felt kind of mushy. I don't know, you know. We could use a word like stronger. I mean, I think the whole point is to say, what, you know, what our phrase decide, describing the design guidelines was what again? You had written.
I think I just. I don't know.
So it's not even, it's not even asking for new design guidelines in the current actions. It's like empowering them to make use of the guidelines that we already have.
Yes.
Because implicitly. It's being said they're not being effectively at least used.
Right.
Right now in the spirit that it would seem like they could be. If I interpret.
I, I think the issue is a bit mushy and, you know, I, my opinion is not necessarily the only or the right opinion, but part of the issue is how they're written. And part of it may be, as Catherine's saying, the willingness to sort of push the envelope or be willing to, to face some legal challenge. Um, I think that it's not necessarily empowering the review board. I think the, the right phrase, but it's more like indeed that we need to develop enforceable design guidelines.
Those are a lot.
That the town board, well, you know, there's different, design guidelines are indeed enforceable, but they're also often not absolute. There's always an escape clause like, well, if you really can't do this, prove to us why you can't, and then we'll might give you a waiver, right? I mean. But I think that the language could be something more like that, but that it, not empowering the board because they have the power. But giving them and for the, the, the design guidelines that are, that are enforceable should be incorporated or improved or something like that.
So that's a, that's a rewrite of that entire bullet, basically, beyond.
Yes. And we may or may not go there because it's. Put a, put a note and, and I'll see if I can write something and I'll see if you guys are happy with it. And then we can go from there. All right.
And it's just so everybody knows nine till seven right now.
Uh, yes. So I was about to, that's the thing I was about to say. So how late do people want to go today? What do we?
Seven.
As I say, I sort of, I've carved out till seven, but I don't, I don't really have much time after seven, right? Uh, tonight.
Okay. Either.
Right. So you guys both don't have time after seven? That's fine. I mean, I was, I figured it'd be anywhere from seven to seven thirty that we quit.
We've only got fourteen left.
Yeah, I know. Well, again, luckily about half are quick and the other half are like Ellen's, where like, like, when we hit Irene, for example, right? You know, it's gonna be.
And I, yeah. And then there, I think we just say no.
Yeah. Some of them, yeah. I was like, yeah, this is a lot. Well, okay. So we, aren't they it? So let's, let's do Emily Adams, which will be fairly quick, I think. And then.
I think that that, this is the one that talks about natural areas and trails supporting both physical and mental health, which I thought a great comment.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then this all relates to the, uh, making it timely in terms of the pandemic and California and all this stuff. Support local businesses, local gives resilience in uncertain economic times, which.
That's a great phrase.
Yeah, it does.
So what are you suggesting from that? Do you want to incorporate some of that into the plan or?
Can Emily Adams be on the planning board?
Yeah.
I think she's got a few too many hats going on right now. I would love to have, we need another person or two, but I don't think she's, uh, likely to volunteer.
Yeah, I think that the, the, yeah, the, it goes throughout the plan in certain kind of areas. I'm, I'm sure that there's a way to put a little statement in somewhere. I mean, we do have new farms all the time and new green energy producers appearing. Now, in terms of whether we should look at gray water, at, at water saving innovations like gray water recycling, promotion of rain, all these things. Uh, yeah, I think that's a watershed issue.
I can tell you all about that as the last permitted compost toilet in the county. Another time.
No, I, I agree.
See, we're not approved anymore.
Yeah. I mean, the list of follow-up questions, et cetera, I agree. I mean, it's, you know, all good points, but either too little specific details for the comp plan or too much work to, to get into. So, um.
Right. And I don't know, I, what is the Perkins gravel pit? I know.
That, that, that's the gravel pit, you know, the.
On some, yeah, in Brooktondale.
Yeah. It used to be University Sanding Gravel. I mean, still is them, but it's being run by Robinson now. And the answer is no. I mean, that, and several people talked about, should it be turned into a park or whatever? And, you know, I think it would be a great place for a solar array. You know, when, when they're done, but, uh, they're not done yet.
Or a town highway barn.
Or, no, it's much too valuable for that. All right.
It's too much traffic.
Okay.
Like all right, there's too much traffic.
Okay, next. Should we go to G?
I think so. Well, do we decide that we would try to do something with the mentioning that they, natural areas and trails support mental and physical health or?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
If we can find.
And we'll do one, oh, Frank, yeah, let's do Frank. And then that'll be it for the night. Pardon?
Frank is large, but I think he's as largely suggestions in terms of resources and stuff, which could be good.
So a question for you, Catherine, there, he mentions, um, the, uh, the study, uh, a certain study, you know, that was commissioned, his point number one.
Yeah.
You know. Would you be willing to take a look at that and see if there's anything from that that was worth incorporating?
Sure. I don't, yeah.
And I don't, I'm. Now, it's a thing about a housing and water and sewer study done by TCAD. Right. Okay. So, yeah, I don't know. So what he says is that the study said it was too expensive to bring water out to Brooktondale, which I think we sort of say in the plan, I'm not sure if we do for sure. I don't feel the need to really source that. So we can probably skip that one.
I think we do say somewhere, because it was brought up in the original plan and it was discovered that it was too complicated.
Yeah, I think that's what's in the, the appendix thing.
And then I don't think it's our job to do a more complete review of the aquifers.
No. And actually, I think that there's a pretty damn complete review of them in there. The, I referenced the two very complete detailed reports. So.
And then the, and the TCAT is their own thing, right? I mean. You know, I, I don't know what it means by extensive review. The thing is that obviously we could have much more service here, but, you know. This.
Several people have mentioned wanting, you know, more bus service. The problem is that of course, it's just, you know, we just really don't have a lot of people to justify it as far as I understand it.
It's basically the same thing as agriculture, right? Like it's hard to make money running buses all the way out here for the amount of fares you get.
Really kind of odd. I mean, this is like a total sidebar, not for us to deal with, but like you, I can literally get, when I used to go to work, I could get to work, but I couldn't get home from work.
Right.
Like the bus line literally has nothing between a four thirty-six and a six something, which just makes no sense. So that's like a silly example, but.
Yeah. So again, I don't know what you meant by a more extensive review of TCAT. You know, I think we.
Go home at five-ish.
No, I don't think we can do that.
Yeah.
I mean, he brings up then, his last one is the, uh, the healthcare need for doctors, small clinical services. And that's been brought up, that was brought up by several people too.
Yes. So if we don't have it.
Is that part of the?
Yeah. It should be. So if we don't have an action, a goal or an action item relating to the desire to have a local clinic, I think we should, Catherine looked into that, you know, a year plus ago. It's different than saying, you know, I know that there's not going to be an eye doctor locating in Brooktondale, right? I mean, it's just that that's not going to happen. Or even a dentist, but we, you know, could, the town could try to help facilitate a, a free clinic weekly or monthly or something. So I think we, I agree with that as a goal.
Yeah. So what I could do is I could add potentially a, a sentence and a subheading to the emergency services. Part of livability where it's emergency services and, and healthcare or something like that and local health.
Right.
Health capacity, healthcare capacity, add a sentence in there about there being a lack of it locally and a need for it. And then put a goal into, uh, not be a goal or an action, but I guess. I don't know.
Probably both, but yeah.
But also.
At least a goal.
But that's something that changes all the time, right? It's pointed out. I mean, we have, the Slaterville no longer has ambulance and now we have, uh, you know, but. Anyway, we have three fire, volunteer fire departments, but.
Yeah, I mean, Irene has.
And that changes all the time.
Yeah. What do we think about Frank wanting to meet? Does anyone want to meet with him? Do you want to meet with him? What do you want?
I mean, if you want to chat with him, I think he's offering his background and expertise. He came to some of our first meetings and it did some of that. Um, that's fine. Uh, but. I don't know. I don't know. I mean.
No, there will be another public hearing.
Yeah, I think, I think he, yeah. And I don't, I, I think he's much, he was very helpful in the formative aspects.
He has a lot of experience. I mean, I don't think.
Yes.
Right.
There's nothing to sneeze at, but I didn't know officially.
But I don't know if it'd be helpful now at this moment. We'll see.
You know, and I'm trying to ward against simple burnout and exhaustion. It's like, I feel like I'm going to be opening up big things. I mean, you know, again, it's very easy to think with, with ten other extensive things we probably should do for the comp plan. And I'm a little worried about getting into that, but I also don't want to ignore important things just because I'm tired. So.
Right. And I will say that the healthcare stuff did come up in public meetings, but it didn't really, uh, shake out. You know, uh, that it was a, it wasn't at the same level as a lot of other things that people talked about. So that's why it's not in there, but I think it's completely relevant. And, um, the fact it's come up multiple times in, uh, this written comments, uh, certainly can include it. And there's a spot for it where it should work well. So.
So, yeah, so Catherine, I, I'm fine if you want to reach out to him. Um, what I'm more leery of is saying, okay, at our next meeting, we'll invite Frank to come talk with us because that would take, I think, a good chunk of the meeting and I don't want to go there.
No.
Cause. So, all right. I think that's, that's that.
Yeah, me. The next one is Greg Reynolds was, we, I don't know if we do, but that, he has asked essentially a lot of questions.
Yeah, I think we could get, figure out this one for sure before we.
Yes. And, and I wrote him, you know, a, a quick, a quick note back because he's asking about the town egg committee, camp plan, committed. And I answered those questions directly to him already, some of those things. Other stuff, um, at some point, I think I'll probably start a correspondence with him. So I think, um, it'd be interesting to.
Yes, on stuff when you do that?
Yes, I can, I can do that. I mean, that was a quick one, but yes, I can give you guys a CC on that.
I mean, one of the other things that's, uh, he kind of touches on, but not quite is the notion of appraisals and stuff. And that was something that I know that Mark also was concerned about is that, I guess we mentioned increase of assessments and things. And the thing is assessments don't necessarily, increased assessments don't necessarily increase tax, taxes, but it, it depends on the formula that's used. So it's.
Right.
And it's also assessment versus appraisal.
Right.
So I can get my house appraised for something if I'm, if I'm looking for a loan.
Right.
But that information's private. It doesn't go to the tax collector.
Right.
You know what I mean? So they might come into my house and see I have four bathrooms and seven bedrooms. And the tax, the tax place only thinks I have two bedrooms and one bathroom, for example.
Right.
So I think that's another part of what he's talking about. Um, and if his loan, if his land's zoned a certain thing, so it can't be a hundred home development, then it can't be appraised for that, I think is his point.
Yeah. Anyway, um, yeah, we'll get to Mark's up when we get there on this one here. Obviously. You know. If restrictions on land use are there, then it gets appraised differently. And that gets reflected in the taxes of the person to pay. The question is, is that a fair amount of reduction or not, right? And that's, that's where the fight always comes over. Uh, and as far as Mark's thing on assessment, yeah, I think we'll have to get to that. I want to look at exactly what he was commenting on.
Okay. I'm, uh, I'm sending around the document with the changes. It's a, um. It's a Google Doc, so you can edit it. Feel free to add to it. Um, or strike out as you, um. Do them, whoever's doing them, um, because I need to hop off and I didn't want to.
Yeah, not, I think we're all going to.
Question before you hop off, Charles, sorry to keep you, or just a general. Do we have a feeling about Irene comment? I mean, Irene's the only elected town official that has commented in this public.
No, marked it as well.
He did?
Mark Whitmer's, yeah, Mark Whitmer sent us two different.
In that same email.
He sent us one email now and one thing a long time ago. And I, yeah, I think we should just address that question. I, I am not. On the other hand, Irene has some valuable information on the emergency services to update that section, which I think we should definitely incorporate. But in general, I agree with your question, Catherine, your implied question. I think. But in general, I agree with your question, Catherine, your implied question. I think we should discuss that next time.
I'm just curious. I don't have a judgment about it. I'm just like, oh, is that a thing? Or like, what are we doing with that?
Yeah. I, I.
Tim, Tim thought he wasn't supposed to.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you. I thought you weren't supposed to either. Yeah.
And honestly, after Mark commented previously, I kind of told him, I didn't want you to, you're not supposed to. Cause you guys are going to get this document, you can make whatever changes you want to when you get it.
So I let them.
So.
Fine with them to make their changes.
Right. So for a lot of what Irene wrote, that's what I'm going to say is, okay, she can make that change when she gets it, but there are some information points.
I mean, if there's some easily incorporable information points.
Sure.
Be done now, it'd just be a lot easier to do it now.
Right. Like the emergency services.
Yeah.
Alright, um, we are meeting the second Thursday.
This will be gone over with a fine tooth gun again by a couple of people.
Uh, so, so Charles, you, you clear for the second Thursday in October?
I'm looking here real fast.
We're trying to get onto that schedule now and that's, you know, we may have to do another additional meeting just to get through all these comments, but, um.
Second Thursday, fifteenth?
I guess.
Yeah, should be fine.
Yeah, that, wait a minute, wouldn't the second Thursday be the eighth?
Uh, maybe, sorry. Yeah, it would be the eighth.
Yeah. And that would be basically, yeah, next week. So are we willing to do that? Catherine, you, I see a grimace.
It's like, that's a grin.
Oh, oh, yeah, right. Alright. I mean, do people want the, meet the eighth or the fifteenth?
Yeah, I'm fine meeting either day. Eighth is fine with me.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine.
The town board is the, the seventh, right?
Sixth. Oh, the agenda meeting's on the sixth anyway. There's nothing on my calendar for the seventh for the town board, but.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so.
And I could try to have ver, uh, versions, I could try to incorporate tentatively some of the versions of these comments into the section, the appendix stuff that I did.
Okay.
How about that?
Yeah. So we just want to make sure if we're editing something, that it's all, that like.
Yeah.
Everybody's edits get reflected in the final document.
Alright, do you guys want me to put the current version into the Google Doc? So everyone's editing the same thing? If anyone's editing, is anybody else editing in, in the next week? And, okay, I will see.
I mean, I think it's easier to just sort of note those things as we go, but.
Well, I, I take Charles' point that at the very end, we have to make sure they all got done and in the right, i- i- into the version, right? And so if you're doing one document, I'm doing another one, then I forget to take something from your document, put it in my document, you know? Uh, which is the beauty of Google Docs, even though I get incredibly confused by Google Docs every time I try to use it. So, um.
And I'm not, I'm not advocating for using it. I'm just advocating for someone, ideally not me, keeping track of the fact that if we're working on different documents, as long as it's, I mean, one way we could do this, Bill, if you have the like master document, you send out the sections of each, that each of us are in charge of. We'll edit those. And then before next week or before whenever, all those come back into one place for any more centralized um, editing. And that way you don't have to deal with the weirdness of Google Docs. I'm fine with that too. I'm not, I don't care. I just don't want to, something to be missed.
No, I, I, I appreciate that. It was hard enough for me to keep track of versions as I was editing things and making changes. And we'd agree to make changes and make sure I actually did all of them and that kind of stuff. But, yeah, I mean, that's why we broke up into pieces to begin with, right? That was.
So do you want to re-break it into pieces?
I'm, I'm.
Send those pieces out and you'll be the person in charge of putting them back together.
Okay. Catherine, you like that? Okay. What do you think? Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Great.
You will get nice little deliveries probably tomorrow or later tonight.
Alright, everybody.
So until six o'clock then on Thursday, the.
Six or five thirty?
What do you guys want to do?
Five thirty works for me because I, and then I can be done, but I'll probably need to be done by seven again though. So.
Okay.
There's only so much time I can.
We'll go with five thirty. Okay. Bye, everybody.
Okay.
Bye. Okay. See you guys.
Thanks for attending, Ken.